Quick to call the ISD 701 school board to order. It's 2:05, 3:30 PM. Would you like to welcome everybody here? Any table setting with that? The move to item 2, the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you wish.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, move to item 3.
We have no public comments today, Mr. Turner.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll go to item 4, administrative reports. Start with the directors.
I will share. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who participated at the all-night grad party. The students, the families who came to volunteer, the committee themselves, the janitors at the Lincoln really went above and beyond and just were really, really helpful. And I did share that with Derek earlier. Our sponsors, and then Scott Hanson also, he came and did the Price is Right for us. So it was a fun evening, lots of kids attended, and most stayed till the very end, which is late, but just wanted to say thank you to everybody.
Thank you. It's good to hear. Anything else?
And commencement was absolutely beautiful. It was, I mean, it just was really nice. There were some really nice touches, and yeah, it was good. And you know what? I'm going to share this with the board because I don't know that all of the new things have moved quickly over the last few days, but I know when we had to quickly modify graduation 2020, we said that at some point in time, if there was a way to appropriately recognize the 2020 graduates, we would do that. So one of the things we're going to do in conjunction with our 100-year celebration on, I believe, Monday night is going to do a tribute to the class of 2020. Superintendent Aldrich, Principal Sikora, senior class advisors, Carrie Fox, and Shawna Eskely are working to make that happen, and the feedback already is just absolutely overwhelming. And that's going to be the night that Bethany McLean is here speaking, and we've got a couple other people speaking that night, so I think it should be really just a wonderful night.
Sounds good.
And we may have the organ. Correct?
Oh, we are. We are. I got a Facebook message at 1:30 last night, or this morning, that she's going to be available, yes, so they will be able to log across the stage.
Awesome. Good news. Thank you. Anything else? Carrie, now, move to the administrators there.
Yeah, we have Mr. Lewis and Mr. Anderson that are here, so whoever would like to go first. Mr. Lewis?
All righty, I'll keep it short. Questions as they come up or at the end, either way is fine, but thanks, Board and Chair, for having me. So I was excited to kind of give an overview of Community Ed and what Community Ed does. So this is just our mission statement. We had our last advisory board meeting a couple, three weeks ago, and we had some discussion about missions and stuff, so I thought I'd share that with you. It's on our website, and then kind of break down just briefly how we're making that mission. I think the hallmark of Community Ed is lifelong learning, which we do. Everyone in the community is responsible for educating every else in the community, and then we make connections to other agencies and create partnerships. Hope that's not too strong. Lifelong learning. So for this year, youth and elder enrichment, we had a little over, currently over 3,000 registrations. 557 of them are non-hitting folks, so whether it's Chisholm, National Puyata, or Grand Rapids or whatever, ages one month through 86 years, so we're kind of spanning the age there. We had about 86 different classes and courses, with 338 different sections offered this year. Eighty-three percent of those registrations occurred online. Last year, I think it was 78, and the year prior, 75% online, so we'll never reach 100%, nor do we want to reach 100%, but it's creeping up there. About 1,200 attended and drop-in events, those would be events that pre-registration wasn't required, so our adult disabilities, that's the EMD, our open swims this year, our bike rodeo, Lujak Cafe. Early learning registrations, when you add in the preschools and the wrap care, which takes place after school, our ECAB, which is early childhood family ed, that's where the parents come with the kids, who run an hour, hour and a half once a week, along with the sibling care that we have available, our ELT screenings, and our kind of recollections, about 532 registrations from those programs, and a little over 600 attended and drop-in events, including our open gyms, meals, knee, our holiday answering events. Everyone in the community shares responsibility. We had about 250 staff instructors, volunteers across all of our programs, so that includes the adult disabilities, early childhood, and our general Community Ed stuff. Connection to other agencies and creating partnerships. Our, we have two main advisory boards, early childhood and then ECAB. We've got parents on there, teachers and staff, senior citizens, some rep from St. Louis County, Atstart, Naihue, City Parks and Rep, Boys and Girls Club, Asom from the VCA, and then other partnerships throughout the year, some of them are listed there. We do a lot with the boosters, some reading supports, PTOs, Fairview, Hilling Foundation is always a great partner with Events and Auditorium. North Homes provided some speakers for our PDX speaker nights this year. Hilling Library, senior citizens, Centers of Talent, it's well some daycares, they help advertise for screenings, get those kids in the door. Walmart gave us some grants this year. Project Care, they come and help with their screening. This one of college, of course, we're doing a college for kids this summer, and then Chisholm Public Schools. Some of our summer offerings, still taking registrations, but these are kind of what we have going this summer. We have some drivers training this week and next week. Safety Town will be the end of June. Sign Language was supposed to start last night, but we postponed it due to the weather. Yardens in summer, ECAB this year at the ELC, so that's exciting. College for Kids, our current registration is about 125. Pickleball doesn't have a number, I put that on there. In theory, it's not really a Community Ed class in the summer, because it's just kind of open to play and reports at the Lincoln, or during the school year, you can take a registration fee instead of using the facility and custodians there. Questions, anything else?
Is college for kids a good number, 125?
You know, I think it's good for our first year, bring it back, because it's the first year we've been doing it. Imagine maybe the numbers were higher at one point years ago when the college was running it full steam, but it's a good start, and it's the end of July, so we still have a couple more months, so. Facility use and scheduling, I was going to throw that in there, because the schools are busy, so we don't send 70 different, uh, school-related groups and 59 outside groups use the facilities this year. We get about 30 different parties throughout the year, whether it was the pool parties, which we fired up once we took over the program, and then the ELC's been popular on the weekends to have birthday parties for the young kids, so. And I also like to thank everybody involved. Community Ed really is involved with all the different principals and schools and custodians and everything, so it really does take a village. I think I dropped Carrie off this year, but thanks Carrie too, but otherwise, special thanks to Tiffany Kozki, she's the Community Ed secretary. If you've never met her, stop before and say hi sometime. And Lynn, who does our early childhood stuff, secretary. Alex Keen, who's been great with the aquatics and the college for kids. Andy, who's been great this year at the ELC, and then Hannah Barney over at Chisholm. Anything questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Kirk, I have one question. Last meeting, you mentioned that scheduling for the football field, soccer, softball, that is done through you, or is that done through athletic part?
So, we're going to call this, we'll call Keith first, just to make sure he doesn't have something going on, and then when it comes down to ink-ing the contract or writing it, then they'll contact us and get that information for him.
So any varsity events that are out at that field are through Keith?
Yes.
Because questions come up, and I was going to ask Mr. Turner about that too. Some of the varsity and junior varsity programs are complaining that they don't get the field because there's a fifth or sixth grade football team practicing or playing. And they want to know what the priority is far as the usage of the field.
They definitely get that. Keith's folks get that priority. I don't know if that happens a whole lot. Mr. Egan, and I know last year, again, it was kind of a hectic, but even in our schedule, I mean, he gets priority over those elementary supports.
You know, and I'm going to just echo what Director Egan said, and I actually communicated to Keith about it, but I just think it would be nice, and I don't care where, on our website, but somewhere, if there was a spot that talked about facilities rental, who to contact, and then maybe the order of priority, and I know it's really difficult because there are so many groups, and then there's booster clubs, and then there's the youth. I mean, I know it's difficult, but just to make it totally transparent to the community, I think that would be helpful.
And I think there's still a need someplace that you can go and find out what these facilities are being used for. They playing soccer there that night, or football, whatever. It's very difficult to go to that website and find out what's going on in the school.
So, do you want to speak to that all, Kirk, or would you like me to?
If you can. On the Community Ed's website, there's a spot for facility rentals. It could be upgraded and add some of the items that you mentioned, Kim.
On the flip side, I just want to commend you because recently I went on to Community Ed to do a registration. So the online registration process is wonderful, and I don't know if we do online registration for athletics simply because we do. So, I mean, I think that's really good because I'm thinking back to our audit report and the management letter and the whole payment process and the way we do the online stuff, it just helps, so thank you.
I just want to say, I think, you know, we've seen that throughout the year here with Kirk's recording, but Community Ed has really rebounded well from COVID. Not that we were really down low, but we've taken a dip, and you've added lots of programming here in the last year and a half, two years, so thank you, Kirk. You've done a very, very good job, so thank you.
My philosophy is always if I have an instructor that wants to teach or help coordinate it because I can't do it all in space, and it's financially doable for everybody involved, I'm willing to try just about anything, you know, although I know a couple of years back, I don't know if it was more than a couple of years, but it was Detroit, and I think they did a pole dancing class. I don't know if I'd be brave enough to do a pole dancing class, but, but yeah, so.
And the other thing that I don't see reflected here too much is swimming. I think the city threw us the ball and dropped the ball, and you've done a great job of getting that picked up.
Yeah, so we got about 300s registered for our aquatics programs, whether it's the stuff that Mike Venzianzo runs, our youth swimming lessons, or adult aquatics. That's just for the summer. Again, we're well over 1,500 registrations for the year in those programs.
I think it's awesome how that has picked up, up into that whole.
Is Cheever Field now, I feel like we've talked about it a few times, is it open from 8:00 to 2:30? Like, the gate open?
8:00 to 2:00, I believe, that's what we have. Yeah, and right now, if you do, it's free, but you do, we want people to register online because there's kind of those waivers that they click. So right now, I think we only have about 11, about 37 signed up for the hall walking this winter, about 11 for the Cheever right now.
So do you know, Kirk, does somebody from Tyler's shop just go open that door every day and then they'll lock it at 2:00?
So it's not monitored?
We have cameras there, obviously.
Okay.
Anything's going okay with, like, the relationship, the workload for you with Chisholm?
Yeah. Yeah, Hannah's been great over there, Chisholm. I plan to meet with Noah early on, the new business manager over there, so we can nail down some of the funding and the coding. I think they have the same challenges over here that we do over here sometimes, it's just getting the coach in the right place.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Good afternoon. My name is Joel, I'm the director of technology. I want to thank the board and the chair for giving me this opportunity to give you a very quick update on technology. I'll clarify, I've covered the end of the last year and as we transition to our summer projects. So, right towards the end of the school year, of course, we went through the MCA testing, and that went very well. And then we implemented a password change, a new password policy with stronger, requiring stronger passwords for staff accounts and multi-factor authentication. It's part of our focus on increasing cybersecurity, and it will improve our stances with renewing our insurance policy this summer, so we went through that. And then, at the end of the year, like usual, we have iPad collections. At the Lincoln, we brought centralized collection to the Lincoln for the first time. What that means is, in the past at the Lincoln, every classroom would collect the iPads for that class, and the teachers, the workload would basically be on every teacher, and the teacher would go in and they'd have to look at the iPads and make sure that they were all there and inspect them. And when we moved to a centralized model, I take all the tech staff over on a day, and we just schedule the kids to come down to a room, and then the tech staff process them so the teacher, it frees up the teacher from doing it. And I think that worked better than ever, right? That was the response that we got when we made that change at the high school. So this was the first time we did that at the Lincoln, and I've heard nothing but positives about that change. We can do a classroom in about 15 minutes with that model. And then after that, we go and we try to collect all the missing iPads and we look at damaged. We're down to about 20 missing iPads right now that we're still trying to collect, and we've got about 30 damaged iPads that we collected over the year.
Can I just, out of how many iPads total, Joel?
Well, with the student number, it's about 2,200.
It's a pretty good percentage.
It is really good, and I still think that we're going to probably collect half of those back.
Sure.
Probably end up with about 10 lost, which is a really good number. It's above average for other school districts.
Of the 30 that were damaged, how many of those have the insurance?
I don't know. I don't have time to run those comparisons.
It's optional. We can't require it. And then, the other thing that we did right at the end of the school year is we got prepped for summer school, which starts June 10th, so we have to, all those iPads that we collected, there's about 85 of them that we set aside that might be going to summer school. The list doesn't come in until, basically, the kids are out of here, so then we have to kind of revise that list, find out who's going to summer school, and then we prepare those into basically whatever classrooms that there are, so we get those rosters from the office and put them all together for the summer school program. And then the other thing that we had to do right away was get ready for Boys and Girls Club, which also starts June 10th. So we had to vacate, we had a tech office in the 219 wing, and we had all of our parts inventory and stuff up there, we had to vacate that room and then set up the technology infrastructure for Boys and Girls Club. So we're ready to go on that. I just found out two hours before this board meeting that apparently they need seven rooms for North Homes, starting, I guess they're going to be here tomorrow, and I found out a couple hours ago. And then, you know, with the transition that the district is going through, we've got a little over 90 rooms that we're moving computers and reprogramming the phones for. In that shuffling around of classrooms, we're also moving the computer graphics lab and then, of course, our tech lab that I, our tech room that we just talked about. And then a couple other projects over the summer, our server upgrades and a new PC management system. And then Cheever Field, we'll have, as soon as the kind of remodeling and construction is over out there, we'll have a bunch of technology that we have to integrate. Over last school year, we brought fiber out there, and then we'll be putting in network switches and security cameras and the huddle cameras and a phone and all that kind of stuff, so we'll get that going. Once Tyler has a system, we can start that. And reprogramming basically all the curriculum systems for the transitions, all of our algorithms have changed, right? Third grade's no longer at the Lincoln, so we have to change how all those, all those data sets are allocated out. And that's kind of the big picture of what we're doing this summer to get ready for next school year. And that's really all I have, unless you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I just want to say thanks because you guys are the experts in technology. I am not an expert at all in technology, and I needed assistance.
On the password switch?
Uh, well, I figured that out, but it screwed something else up in the process for me, and I go into panic mode and, you know, trying to figure it out on myself, probably four days, it took his team 10 minutes once we were face to face. So I appreciate the help, and I know with the change of the password from hearing it, it wasn't easy for other people, and really what you guys do is, I mean, you take the stress away from people like me, so thank you.
Yeah. And of course, you know, we have about 350 staff accounts, 350 to 400 accounts, and you're going to hear from, you know, the 30 that had a problem, but you're not going to hear from the 270 that, you know, went just fine, but that's just the nature of the game.
It's nice to know that you're there, though.
Yeah. And we're prepared for it all, we, you know.
And there's at least two of us.
Not our first radio. All right.
You know what, Joel, and I echo Sarah's thanks, and I think the one thing, and maybe it's something you're going to say later, but at the all-night grad party, in talking to some of the teachers that were there and some of the people that were involved in the move, I mean, just kudos to your staff, to the maintenance staff, to the PSAs. Like, what I heard was that step, that move went more quickly than they anticipated, that there were some teachers that were actually in their new rooms and able to start setting things up before the end of the week, which was way quicker than they anticipated. And I actually stopped at the Green Haven Monday afternoon, kind of late, and I expected everything to just be like, everybody, the Boys and Girls Club packing, whatever, no, there's stuffs over there, and the PSAs that were there helping, like, it was hot, it was late in the day, and they're smiling, and they were just organized, so kudos to everybody that had any part in making it happen.
Thank you. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go to item C, community reports. Anything? Here, now, move to item 5, motion to approve the agenda.
Oh.
Support.
Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director Warden. Any discussion? Here, now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All four, same sign. Motion, here, thank you. With that, move to item 6, motion to approve the consent decision.
Oh.
Support.
Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director McLaughlin. Any discussion?
I just have a quick question. So I, in looking through there, we, I think I counted 26 temporary staff help, right, for the custodians?
Correct.
And due to the relocating.
Yep.
Did we know or anticipate needing this many in the beginning?
Well, and, you know, just talk a little bit about Director McLaughlin with the move. I think, initially when we started, we thought that we would need people for about a month. Thought it would take about a month to move everything. So when I called Tyler and he said he was basically done with the move after four days, I think that just says how hard these people worked. I mean, the expectation was they just weren't going to get that far. So, yes, I mean, I think he thought he would need those and probably every body he could get from the outset, but now, right?
Right.
Now, and when we did the letter and we hired these, it was anticipated date, it was up to a month that you would work. So he's still going to need, like, now, there's a lot of wiping down that's happening, like, today, this entire floor of lockers got scrubbed from top to bottom by the PSAs that are working, so he's probably got about another full week of some, like, cleaning and some deep cleaning that they're going to do, and then he's going to turn them loose a little bit early is what it looks like, so.
So this, we anticipated this, but this will change since it won't be till June 20?
Correct.
Just because they, I mean, just went so well, which is a positive.
Correct, and there might be a handful that stick around a little bit longer, but I think here about the next week, he's going to pretty much will those numbers down to nothing.
You know?
Yep.
And I'm going to echo that, that's what one of the teachers was saying, like, they were able to get in their room, but the PSAs were in there, like, scrubbing everything down, so it was, they were just, like, the teachers were very, that I talked to, were very impressed by that whole thing.
Also, with how quickly it's moved, is it still where teachers will not have access this summer?
Correct.
Okay. Because I noticed that's a little change.
Yep.
And I just didn't know if, because of this now, if it's, since it's going so well, if they'll be able to get in.
Well, and the piece is that the waxing part isn't a part that really happens a heck of a lot faster, because it just takes time. Put it down, it dries, it's, you sit. But I do think that, you know, we probably project the date of August 15th for teachers. There's teachers calling today to get into the building, I mean, I know they're chomping at the bit, so if Tyler can, you know, get closer to August 1st, I mean, we'll sure open it up to people if we can, but we want to be safe that he gets all this work done without, and what we have that happens is if it's just kind of a free-for-all, if people can come, they'll wax a section of the floor, and somebody will come in here in the evening with their fob and walk across, and not know.
Yeah.
And, and we're just doing a lot of work over and over again, sometimes, so. But I think if we can get in earlier, that would be the goal, is to let them get in and do some work, and say, like, do something.
Thank you for the call.
Thanks.
Anything else? Here, now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All four, same sign. Motion, here, thank you. Right there, move to item 7, administrative business, Sir Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am as a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 revised budget as presented. I think everyone got a copy of this, and this is actually an improvement from what the board adopted, believe it or not. So we, let's just review what the board adopted, Alex, last year, just so we have those numbers. I mean, I know it's a rough estimate, it was about 2.1 million.
Yep.
Correct? Yes. We used the enrollment of around 21, 20, 25, and our October count was actually 2197. I'm not exactly sure where those numbers are going to end up, so that was a big, big reason why this improved, as well as some additional funding for special ed and basic field revenue from the state, so without those components, it would really go a heck of a lot worse, so. I guess just a couple things to highlight, obviously, the general fund and the operating fund, but hoping to turn around our transportation a little bit, actually trimming some routes and getting more efficient with our transportation, and then, Community Ed, we're, you know, still not, not making money on those kids. We're hoping that'll change with the BPK funding, but we left that out of here for that this time.
Have you heard anything about the BPK funding?
July 1. They have to let us know by July 1. I was at a meeting yesterday, maybe just to reemphasize that they're allocating the seats, and I think they're allowing some input through June 17th, or some application revisions, but they'll let everyone know by July 1.
What's the status of the message? You know, we hear all different stories.
Yeah, well, basically, Shubhat is our contractor, and moving forward, maybe you want to talk to the house, you just met with them last week, so.
Yeah, Tom Lots is actually helping us try to work out a new contract, but his priority now is to see if he can down to about 15 now, it's going about 21.
Yep.
So I mean, if we figure $50,000 to $60,000 of route for regular transportation, so that would be huge in balancing that.
Yes.
That's why I asked, because when we originally approved this change in the schools, we were predicting that we'd have a change in route sector, got savings there, but that's a possibility. we were predicting that we'd have a change in routes that we got savings there.
Yep.
What it looks like, we, you know, we've already made some plans to provide supervision earlier at all of our buildings, starting at 7:00 in the morning. Typically now buses are dropping off, no earlier than like 20 after 7:00, 7:30 in some instances. So we're trying to create a little flexibility for our, our transportation contractor that they could get some kids and drop off a building and then go make another run. Where typically those were just individual buses. So it might cost us a little more on the supervision end in the morning to pay someone to help supervise those kids. But like Alex said, I think he's being, he's even low balling it low. I think it's more like 75,000 per route. He said 50 to 60, I'll keep him a little bit higher. I think it's closer to 75 and seven routes will turn us around.
We're in the process of devoting the contract now. Based on savings.
It's going really well. I think Dustin from Shubhat is going to bring us a proposal on the, around the 15th. And then we're going to meet again and see if it's going to work.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know what, and I want to comment related to the budget. If I'm looking at the membership numbers, our district has a lot to be drawn up. When we ended up the year, 75 students more than we ended 2023. I mean, certainly we have a lot of ground to make up for a lot of years, but in a population, without increasing population, for us to grow 75 students is helpful.
And the, you know, we, I dug in a little bit deeper and, and yes, it was 75 people. But we maintained 70, 80 M's throughout the year. Which means that, you know, some of those kids might have not attended every day or maybe came halfway through the year or left halfway through the year. But the new enrollment that we had, if you equate it to hours throughout the year, we, it's about $700,000 in unplanned revenue. That enrollment that walked through our door, that was a surprise. So we'd like those surprises and it's about maintaining that and growing. That's, that's what we need to do to be successful moving forward is maintain that population. And I'd love to add additional students if possible, so.
Well, and you know what, and I think it speaks volumes to the leadership in this school, to the teachers, to, to every person from top to bottom. Because I truly believe the culture in our district has changed. And we have amazing programs and quite honestly, I'm biased, but why don't you anchor a little one early? Because there's a lot of good things going on in this school.
I think we, we've shown that our staff has done such a, how do I put this, without offending anybody. Just to build a new school doesn't mean you're going to get a better education. No shit.
Could you explain that?
What I'm saying is like, just because you're going to build a new school and they're neighbors, doesn't mean you're going to get a better education to go there. And I think the staff we have here is by far the best up here on this side of Northern Minnesota. I think example is that we picked up 75 students.
Well, and I look at all of the options we have. I mean, education is not one size fits all anymore, right? Like for a lot of kids, if there's no bricks and mortar, it's better. So we've become, accomplished that by our blue jacket virtual academy. We're investing, look at it, in the young people, the little kids. What Kerry is doing with our career academies and technical education and curriculum, whether it's college readiness or career intent, I mean, like, I feel like we are, we're improving in so many ways. We have improved in so many ways that, I mean, I just can't, I'm proud to be a part of this. And I think we have a good team from the board all the way up and down. So. Thank you.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I'll make one.
Motion made by Director Martin.
Oh, send.
Sessioned by Director Egan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item D is a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 budget as presented. What I'll say about this is, you know, we were able to reduce about $800,000 to us moving around in classrooms. But unfortunately, we had, we're looking at about a 15% increase in health insurance. So we didn't make quite the progress that we, we had hoped to. So that's our starting point and we'll do a revised on this next, next meeting.
Alex, I'm going to miss this. The fiscal year 25 budget, what was the enrollment number that that was built around?
We used what, the 2197.
Just our current number?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get a current here. So if we come back and we don't have that number, we'll have to address that.
This is pretty standard, but every state has that deficit.
I think, around here they do. Yeah. I mean, a lot of, a lot of schools were hit hard with COVID and everything that's happened in the last couple of years. But I.
According to the service cohort members, we're in a lot better shape than most of them.
Yeah.
And do most of those have an operating levy?
Some do and some don't, yeah. Some trying and some fail, but.
What percent of Minnesota schools do you think have that operating levy?
I'd say more than half. It's definitely more than half.
It's a high percentage.
Great. I can find, but I know you have access to it also on the MRE site. It's, there, there is some graphs and information on there that talks all about operating levies, who has it, who benefits from them, who doesn't benefit from them. So I can send it to you too, if you can't find it, Marge. But I know you, you used to be able to get it at MRE stuff.
And is it more rural than metro schools?
Well, I, I think the, the impact, the dollar for dollar impact in, you know, larger suburban communities, you just get more for your money because the impact is so little on the taxpayer. Now for us, we, you know, we look at what a million dollars would need per home. Let's say if it's $20 a home in Hitting, it might be a dollar 50 in the Lake River Lake. So the scale isn't the same.
Looks like most of the rural areas got hit harder.
Yeah.
It's hard though to, to look at a deficit and prove it year after year after year and watch that general fund continue to go down. It's like, how far can we go?
And that's some of the discussions that we want to have with you about. We have some levy that's going to fall off here. That, there's some projects that we did, what year was it again?
2010.
2010, that's coming, that's closing here at the end of 25?
Yep. So next, I think next year's levy will be the last year we need to levy.
So our, our, what we're hoping to do, and we want to talk with you more about it, but, you know, we'd like to run some numbers, maybe talk to a consultant about, a consultant about doing an operating referendum, not this coming election year, but the following election year and the off year. And seeing if we could replace that money and have the zero impact to our taxpayers. So they might, when that fell off, they might see a small decrease in their property taxes. We're just asking, could, could we maintain the status quo and not increase it, but not have it go down? So that'll be a campaign we'll have to talk about if that's what we want to do, but.
You want to avoid statutory operating debt. Because if you get that, go that far, then the state will take over and tell you how to run the district. And we want to avoid that at all costs.
And that's really the question, how far can we go down if it's going like this?
There is a minimum, but I can't remember, recall what it is. It's a.
I don't want to put Alex on the spot, but he worked through some of those numbers down the other day at Ark with Days of Operation and.
The board's policy, I believe, was he possessed it. Yeah, and worked.
It used to be one year you got to get yourself out of there, otherwise the state would take over. I don't think they did like the same old days.
There's a form that I tell you, it's, it's got to operate. Yeah, and there's a lot of districts that are much, much more shaped than us as a percentage. But that can change very quickly when you're running large deficits.
So when the state comes in and takes over, why are they?
I've never been through it.
Me neither.
I've been involved in Chisholm and it's, it could have changed. But it used to be three years of deficit spending gets you in. And it takes three years to get back out. And the state will come in and they'll, they can re-rate your contracts. They can pay people different wages. They, they can do whatever needs to happen to balance the budget and they'll do that. So for instance, in Chisholm, we, we walked around with reams of copy paper, our own little individual reams of copy paper to do our copying, because we were just trying to save up paper. And that was a, too much copying, we were told that we were doing. So there's, there's lots of, we don't want to be there, basically. We don't want to be in a situation where we get there. And, you know, I, I think this, this operating referendum, I think is one potential solution. Another thing, again, to discuss is, is potentially freeing up that OPEP money that we set aside, the 3.9 million that's sitting there for to pay off OPEP debt. But I don't, you know, I, our concern that we're talking about too is the fund balance. I don't, the fund balance, yeah, it's dwindling. It's dwindling and we don't, we don't want to continue with that trend. We do have some of this self insured health insurance money that we haven't applied and we're still having that conversation. We gave, you know, a million of it back to the employees, but our portion is, we still haven't applied. So we, we could pay down some of this debt when we clean up in the fall. If that's what we choose to do, but it really depends on the enrollment. If our enrollment goes up a little bit and we're sitting here with it, having a different conversation. If our enrollment is 21, 20 in the fall, we'll, we'll be back in cut mode, for sure.
My question.
During that, during, within the year, not putting it out to the nation.
Absolutely. Yeah.
So my question is, this is on, we're talking about it now. So when is the finance committee supposed to meet with them about this? Cause I would have thought that we would have met before this is on here to approve.
We can absolutely meet.
Yeah, I, I think some of this, not that we can't do that, Director Gobarty, but Alex is leaving here for a little while and he had a deadline to get this done before June 30th. So we had to get it into this meeting. I think it just came in kind of a crunch, but.
Yeah.
But we, we could just meet as a finance committee.
Kick around committee.
Regardless, yes.
Yeah.
Cause we, you know, we've wanted to pitch again some of that OPEP fund that's sitting there. I want to talk about that referendum with, you know, if we do that, I think it's, it's really hiring consultants, so we should talk about it so it's done right. And it's received by the public correctly. But that's.
Good idea with the.
You're back, you're back here near the end of the month?
Yeah. Oh, no, it's just next week.
Okay. Well then, let's start the meeting when you.
Soon as you get back.
Yeah.
The only thing is with the timing of the referendum, I think we have to be really strategic about it.
Right, and that's why I think we get somebody that does this and does it for a living and knows the ins and the outs. Can talk through it, so.
Is there a motion to accept the approval?
One motion.
Move by Director Polter, supported by Director Egan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item D is a motion to approve the purchase of services agreement between ISD number 701 and Gaylord Zell for vision and repair services for the 2024, 2025 school year as presented.
So, support.
Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Martin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item D is a motion to approve the region three low incident services agreement between ISD number 701 and ISD number 6070 for educational audiologist services for the 2024, 2025 school year.
One motion.
Support. Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion?
It's nice to see these collaborative agreements.
This is an ongoing one that, you know, Nathan has been, we've been a part of for, for quite a while. So this is, this is a good partnership, definitely.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item M is a motion to approve the agreement between ISD number 701 and PDA Tech Nursing for the 2024, 2025 school year.
So, support.
Moved by Director Martin, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item F is a motion to approve the new activities fees effective with the 2024, 2025 school year.
So.
For. Moved by Director Gobarty, supported by Director Egan. Any discussion? Is that activity, he's not here. He just went.
Okay. I might be able to help you.
Did the activity pay gone up?
Yes. He had sent, he had sent, I don't know the percentage exactly.
He's not, he's, he's sent out the old rates and the new rates, but I think in the email, he said it hasn't gone up for 20 years, a long time. So, so for example, athletics in grade seven and eight would go up from 105 per sport to 135 per sport. And nine through 12 from 130 to 160. And the fam, but the family cab looks like it remains at 550.
Yes.
And then there's a couple other, like figure skating is going up from 75 to 105. Fine arts and cheerleading.
He, I think, sometimes emails, I think it might go up to ISD 701. So he typically forwards them to me and then I forward them to you, so you get them. And maybe they didn't happen this time, I apologize.
I gotta go take that class.
So I did ask a few questions, just because I, I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to make this meeting. And so my concern was, I mean, I agreed it was time to raise them, but my concern was already at the old price, how many students were getting waivers? And would this really jump that number up? And what he shared with me is really, there's maybe a 10 to 12 students who currently get that waiver and with that small increase. He'll monitor if there is a big jump, but doesn't anticipate, you know, that being. Also kind of questioned what our enrollment in our athletics in the last three years looked like as far as, you know, have we grown, have we decreased? Is it pretty, you know, pretty much plateaued, you know, stayed the same? And really right around the same. So also watching that, just to see if cost is a deterrent from people joining us or who maybe don't want to ask for that waiver. Just because a lot of things have gone up these days and it could be tough for families. But he was, he had very positive things to say and we'll, we'll watch it.
Okay.
And you know what, and I don't disagree with that, but I wonder if more of a barrier is not the $20 or $30 it's gone up, but you look at volleyball, you look at hockey, you look at basketball, right? Like there are so many athletes probably that feel that in order to be competitive, it's not what they do during the season, but it's what they do all year round that might be cost prohibitive. But I agree, like we have to try to do something to try to encourage kids to participate. And that activities department golf tournament that's coming up, that use, that, those funds are used to support students that need a little extra help.
I want, I talked to Mr. Hollard's office already, the parent chair. Do you know if we completed that with the assumption?
We have not. I, I, so I talked to Mr. Turner. They had reached out like April, but he, he hadn't set a meeting with them yet. So what Director Egan is asking about is we would, we would need some type of agreement with the assumption school that's there offering seventh grades or having seventh grade instruction and those kids are going to participate in any of our activities similar to what we have at the VCA. And a lot of those things, agreements need to be in place before the first practice happens. So the timing is, is getting pretty quick for the board to act on those things, so. And then there's, there'd be a question, is that, is that in our best interest to approve those? those agreements? And that'd be something that you'll have to consider, I guess, but.
The thing I'm returning with is, does that, if we have assumption in B C A part of our programs, their enrollment count against our enrollment as far as where we sit?
Or the tier level.
With the tier level.
That, that's what Keith would have to determine and, and what new, and I don't know if those new numbers that come up will follow you. And, you know, we usually reconfigure those each year, but they might only change a couple of student notes or whatever, but.
But if it's just for like seventh grade classroom, they're going to have like 10 kids.
Yeah, right. And I don't know if they use their whole population like they do for us, like the 912, I don't know. But no, that's, that's something that he's aware of, and, you know, in a lot of ways, I don't know, I don't know that that's our place to go out and be knocking on the door asking either. I don't, I don't know.
Because assumption, so when you said somebody got in contact, you contacted them or they contacted us?
No, Keith had said, I believe, the, their principal had reached out to him sometime before the end of the school year and just wanted to talk about it, and they had set a time to do so, I guess, so. But it wasn't, it wasn't until like after this meeting, I don't know.
My fault, because I brought it up to their principal to talk to, to Keith to find out what they have to do and how they're going to do it on a personal level, because I have a granddaughter that wants to play.
Sure.
So they have about 10 students enrolled in their seventh grade? And are they adding eighth grade this year too?
That's, that's just seventh, so maybe they changed it.
I'm pretty sure they went to eighth grade.
Oh, okay.
For next year.
Right.
For next year.
Well, that's just, you know, that's a conversation that, that we've had before, and just, you know, again, our, our parent share agreements with Chisholm, we've got parent share agreements with Cherry, we've got parent share agreements with D C A, and we might have some with assumption. I mean, at, at what point do we just say as a district, if you want to be in our activities, you need to be our student? And, I mean, at some point, I think you need to at least have that conversation.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, good conversation.
N M C is a motion to approve the agreement settlement agreement regarding the district's retiree health insurance between ISD number 701 and Hiving United Educators. Melinda loses. Jen for Rachel Mackey and Caitlin Elbert.
So move.
Moved by Director Martin, supported by Director Egan. Any discussion?
So I don't know how much we can discuss here, Alex.
We can ask questions. Yep, absolutely. And I can give you a background here if you'd like. I, I think that would be in the best interest.
Yeah, because I, I read through it, and then I heard from other teachers, and I don't know if, where I heard from other staff members about health insurance, is this same deal or if it's different? So if you could, that would be good.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll try to give you the, the quick version here, or best I can. So this is actually, before I was hired, this is, this has been an ongoing debate between the district and these employees. What, what it entails is, in, the board had approved, ratified an agreement with Hugh and with our other bargaining agreements or other bargaining groups also, that effective July 1, 2008, if you were hired prior to July 1, 2008, you got this benefit, this retiree health benefit. If you were hired after July 1, 2008, you got this benefit. It was a small, lesser benefit. Now, our contract will say that in order to qualify for that benefit, that you have to be teaching at least half time in the district. The sticking point with the union was hire date is hire date. These four ladies were actually hired before, hired by the district before 2008. In the district's view, they weren't half time or more, so they didn't qualify for the benefit. Their view is, hey, I was hired in 2003 or four or five or whatever my hire date was, that's my hire date, I should qualify for this benefit. So that's what the fight has been for the last six years. So what, and even a little bit longer than that. So this agreement is, it's really a settlement. Is, is this a complete win for the district? No. Is it a complete win for the employee? No. They, they're going to be getting a tier benefit rather than full family coverage. They would only qualify for a single benefit, one family member. So the cost to the district is much less. I've met, you know, I, I had this, I had this mindset, right, that I'm working with the district, I'm protecting the district, that I'm a, need to be a good steward of the taxpayers' money. And when I met with the attorney and we talked about what the cost of arbitration and what this fight would, would potentially cost the district, he said that would not be being a good steward of the taxpayers' money when you have a settlement that both parties are in agreement and it's something that we both can live with. So it's, it's, I think it's going to create an atmosphere of, of a little bit more cooperation amongst some of our staff, special, especially some of these, these employees that are, were affected, because they were a little disgruntled and unhappy about the situation for the last few years, so I, and rightfully so. I mean, their, their view, they're right. Our view, district was right. We could have sat down with an arbitrator and somebody could have told us who was right, and then we would have had to live with it. We chose to, to come to an agreement.
It's a compromise.
How do we make sure that the language in these contracts then, you know, let me prevent this from happening again based off of the language that we use? Because this then is separate than what people have been bringing to me about something else with health insurance.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, when it says part, you know, working part time, but your hire date, you know, and it can be looked at differently, we, we don't want to keep running into this. So I guess, what are we doing to change the language so it doesn't keep happening?
So there, there is no one else. We've, we've vetted that, there is no one else out there that could come forward.
But I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Future clauses for different things.
There's also language within the agreement, if you look at the, at the very end of the I'll read it to you here. The parties agree that this agreement sets forth their complete agreement with respect to the resolution of the dispute over eligibility for sunsetted retiree benefit. So sunsetted retiree benefit affects these, just these four people in our district, and there is no one else. The, it says that it's also non-binding, non precedent setting, and it does not establish any type of past practice. So you can't come back and say, oh, you did this, and now. So, but ultimately, what I've learned, Director Gabardi, is that anything can be challenged.
Yeah.
No matter how solid it is that, so again, I mean, we'd have to deal with those as they come up, but I really feel that this is going to put this issue to bed. I've been working more closely with Director Berklich on this for, for quite a few years, and I think this is a good resolution for both of us.
It's the right thing to do.
It's fair for us to resolve one question. So those four teachers were under the tier two policy.
Yep, yep.
So, and that, the tier two, I think we're giving about $2,500 a year.
$1,200 a year, I believe, on the health savings account.
Oh. That's for the, oh, it's, it's like $2,000.
Oh, okay.
So do they even change that for that health? Because it would be put into their account for six years.
So with this agreement, those payments cease.
Yeah.
Now they're, they're going ahead, they'd be on the new plan. That, that money's theirs. That's not something, now, we, we could have, we had had this conversation about putting in the agreement that that money had to be spent on health premiums, their health premiums. But in talking with our attorney, there was no way to enforce that. So it's, yes, they, they got a chunk of money, some of them might have $25,000, $30,000 sitting in a health savings account. Will they use that to pay the premiums? I would, I would assume so. Right, right.
Probably stop.
But those, those payments are ceasing now with, with signing a disagreement. Like I said, it's not, it's not a win, it's not a complete win for the district. It is a compromise, but in the grand scheme of things, it's, I think it's the wise thing to do.
That's what we pay the big bucks.
Well, I don't know about that, but thank you.
And I just feel like, to Sarah's question is, you know, just like my, my tenure on this board, I feel like the first time I read a contract, there's a lot of stuff that I think Superintendent Aldrich for sure has worked to clean up, to try to take out some of the ambiguity and stuff, so I guess like they always say, you got to be careful whether there's a comma or not a comma or whatever. But I feel like our district has worked to clean up some of that.
We've, and it's.
Years we've led it here. And that's, it's a one year and it's up the next year.
And when you, when you renegotiate an agreement every two years, it just tends to get choppy, and then things get thrown out, torn in, cut and pasted. So we have been, the only trouble with changing language in a contract is typically then there's, there's some type of give for that language change. So careful with that too, that we're picking the things that.
And we said deadlines, this is dead, sunset right here, whatever, so. And that's a fair reason, too, otherwise, case by case, I guess.
Right.
And Alex, you said the insurance went up 15% for the issue. Really a good thing with the contract settlement was the way it was, and actually mistaken that it was, otherwise.
We got some savings on the health insurance, yes. Yeah, I'm working it out.
Is there a motion? Chair, support. Moved by Director Martin, supported by Director Egan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, thank you. Good discussion.
N M H is a motion to go into closed session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation.
With this, we'll look for a motion to recess this meeting for the time being, go into a separate meeting, closed session, to discuss the superintendent's evaluation, and we come on to that meeting, go back into this meeting. There won't be any further action taken by anyone, so.
Almost.
Just like the public.
Almost.
Moved by Director Haller, supported by Director Berklich, Chair Berklich, and whoever. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, and thank you, people in the audience for showing up.